Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four Town Code Amendment, Chapter Seventy-one Traffic Regulations. Casey, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll read a few rules. Public notice of this hearing has been published in the newspaper and posted on town bulletin boards and website that meets or exceeds statutory requirements for this subject matter. Copy of the public notice was filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. Town clerk is going to be recording all comments in a concise and brief manner. However, any written statements will be recorded in a similar manner but also made part of the record, as long as they're submitted in full to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement can be recorded, and then please just identify yourself by giving name and address. No debates during this hearing, and comments will be limited to a three-minute time period for folks speaking individually, and then a five-minute exception will be made if there's a spokesperson for a group, or if your statement was submitted in writing. So, this public hearing is now coming to order, and it's being called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following. A Town Code Amendment to Chapter Seventy-one Traffic Regulations, Chapter Seventy-one dot two-five-B. No through traffic permitted on certain streets or intersections within the town. Elimination of Code Section to remove inconsistent or outdated ordinances. So, I'll ask if anybody signed up. No signups? Okay, so we have no one signed up, so I'll just call from the audience if anybody wants to speak.
For the streets?
For the streets, yes, sir. Go right ahead. Just a name and a address when you get up there.
Yeah, not a very good speaker. I can talk to yours off the elephant, but I ain't a good speaker. All right, my name is Kenny Pierce. I live on, we live in One Thousand Sixth Avenue. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-eight, and I've lived in Kill Devil Hills my whole life. I grew up on this beach. All right, well, what I'm getting at is, the reason that Sixth Avenue is a one-way street, because I, when they built these schools, I lived in that, where any school was built out here. And I talked to the Overtons, that he was the architect, I believe, at that time, and I asked them then, when I was living in my house, when that high school was built over there, because I coached football at Manio High School for fifteen years, and three years at First Flight High School, and you opened up Sixth Avenue? I'm just going to tell you what happened in Manio. It opened up a racetrack for everybody to, and Baum Street, I was told at the beginning, Baum Street was the exit for this school. I don't care how long they sit at a stoplight, because I, you used to drive a day-going school bus to school. Now every parent wants to drive their kid to school. I don't care about that, but they can sit at the school bus. Not make a racetrack with the high school kids. When they get out, you know what a kid's going to do. On top of that, with all this said, I've talked, called the chief twenty times over the years to patrol the speeders on Sixth, the wrong-wayers around that stop one-way street. I ain't seen him yet. Not one patrolman has been there. There is a lot of kids that ride bikes to school in the morning and walk down that street to school, because it's safe. Somebody's going to get run over. Is it going to be your kid? My kids are all grown, but I'm looking out for the regular kids. And I've lived there for years, and there ain't nobody in this room that even knows me that would beg any difference. I'm thinking of the kids. And I'm not, I mean, excuse my French, but I'm telling you, it's, I'm sorry, but anyway, it's really infuriating. We come to this town hall, Ben Spruill and some of us, we got no notification of this meeting. I heard it through the grapevine an hour ago. I would thought you would have sent letters or give us some notification that live on that street to be here in this meeting, and this ain't right. They're trying to push that stuff through without letting us know about it, that we could have a leg to stand on it? I mean, I don't know. Kill Devil Hills or Dare County made this thing. Now they can fix this thing, and it ain't Sixth Avenue fix. When they come over the top of that hill, they'll be mock speed when they come by my house. I promise you, I've seen it. If there's something else, it may be, but it's left from short notice, that I just found out about it, and I can't get all my thoughts together, but it's very agitating. That's all I got to say. I want to hear about it, but I would like a little extension for this meeting, so I can get my neighbors, because I already talked to Allison, she was in a meeting that she couldn't get off of, and she still wanted Allison Truill. I know that Amy, I mean Lisa Herro, that just closed in her daddy's house, Mikey Rose's house, I just stopped and talked to them on the way here, she don't want it. But that's all right, you don't have to take my word for it. I told them to send letters. And I'll see the rest of them neighbors, because I've lived there longer than most all of them, and I'm going to not end this right now. That's all I can say, and be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm one of your neighbors too, Ken.
What's that?
And I didn't know about this until I came for the trash attack award.
You didn't?
I didn't know about it.
And you're a teacher.
On the record, Allison. My name is Karen Pierce, One Thousand Sixth Avenue, Kill Devil Hills. I just want to go on the record that we're opposed to it, because I feel like the road is already a hazard because of speeders, and we stopped to talk to one of our neighbors, and she has a Ring camera, and she said she sees, and I see it personally, especially when school is starting and when it's letting out, that they just race through here. So, I just feel like, if you have that going both ways, it's really, just going to really step up the hazard. So, I just want to be on the record that I oppose it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Close public comment, and turn it over to you guys.
All right, well, we've gotten some good input tonight. We've gotten some on, I guess, in our neighborhoods and online as well, and I'll open it up to the board for discussion. What are your thoughts?
I can't hear anything. I'm an order hearing, but I can't hear nothing you say.
I'll be loud for you.
There we go.
All right.
As loud as you can.
I got a holler, we'll holler. We'll get it to you, all right?
Go ahead.
But what's the, how does the board feel?
I mean, I'll go ahead and start, because I live on the other side of Sixth, so not many, not some of you know, but I live on Swan, so I live on the racetrack. I live where...
No debates, no debates.
I do, I do. They go both ways. They turn, ideally, they go to Baum and they go to the stoplight. They don't. They turn on Swan Street. So, I, I see, I hear your point, and I, I completely understand that. I'm not a hundred percent for opening it, but I think there is going to be a time in the very near future where it's not going to be an option, when we have the two developments going in that are, that are going in, in that, in that neighborhood further south. I'll, I'll make two really good points that I have observed. Not only do I live on Swan, but I am one that picks up my child in a car every day, and sometimes she walks home. And I go down Sixth, because it's dangerous to turn left off of Swan. So, going down Sixth on Monday afternoon, UPS truck turned illegally down Sixth, and we were almost head-to-head. That happens, I see it. In addition to that, I walk every day in, in that neighborhood. I walk my dog every single day, see, see lots of people all the time out walking, and I'm always at that corner. That is a very frequent occurrence. And so, I, you know, I think we have our staff saying that would make it easier. We obviously have delivery people that clearly think it would be easier for it to be open. So, that happened Monday, then Tuesday, I was stopped at Baum and Sixth, turning left, and caught the new houses. For those who are not familiar with this area, another important thing to know about this area is that there are seven new builds north of Swan, and there are seven or eight south of Swan. So, it backs up at pickup and drop-off, as I'm sure you have seen if you've been in that neighborhood. So, a car was backing up from the driveway, and literally just this far from backing up into me. So, two days, Monday, Tuesday, back up. I'm not saying opening Sixth would alleviate that, I'm not saying it's the right answer. There is no right answer in this situation. We are alleviating a very massive amount of traffic into a very small space. There is no right answer. But, the more we have developments to the south and in that neighborhood, at some point, it may become necessary. And, and right now, Swan Street is bearing the brunt of all of that neighborhood traffic. I see it every day. So, that's, and for the record, I was not the one who brought up to, to change this. I, it's been like that. I've been in my house, I used to garden with your, with your dad, twenty-four years ago. I, I've been in my house for twenty-four years, it's been like that since the schools. Again, maybe it doesn't need to happen today, but I, I believe that in the future, it's probably going to be necessary. That's my thought. You, there's, there's, yeah.
Anybody else from the board like to chime in?
I, I recall back when they, when they built the schools, the thought process was that traffic would come out of the schools, go to Baum, and then exit through the stoplight on the bypass. And that's probably something you can't control, how the cars go, but that was the intent. And I can't see that opening up Sixth Avenue is going to do anything other than just channel the cars right straight down Sixth Avenue with nowhere to go. I mean, that was, you know, that was my biggest concern when I first saw this, was that they were going to go throughout the neighborhoods even more. I think now they have a clear sense of being able to get to the, the bypass and stoplight. I don't think it's a good idea. I really don't. I, I just, I think you're going to create a lot of problems if you do that. How many, do we have any idea of how many calls we've had into the police department for the people that have been going the wrong way, or?
No, sir, I don't.
I'd be interested in finding out what that is, and see how many calls we've had into the police department where people have reported, you know, people going the wrong way. It's just, to me, people break laws. They, they do it all day long on bypass speeding, they run stop signs. I, I don't think you're going to cure anything by doing it, I think you're going to create a bigger problem. That's just my opinion, I felt that way back when it was done, and I feel that way now.
Anybody else?
I don't know, I'm kind of in the middle on the, on the issue here. Sort of to Ivy's point about, maybe this isn't an issue that we have to address or change today?
Dylan, would you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. No, I was just saying, I'm sort of in the middle on this issue, in that maybe to, sort of to Ivy's point, this isn't a problem that we have to address immediately, maybe there is more further study required than what we have at present, perhaps. Just my thought.
For me, I, I don't have, yes, sir.
Speak into the microphone.
For me, for me, I don't have a position either way. I, I think, yeah, I mean, it's just another way to filter the students in and out of the school, and I think that's probably would, would be helpful to open it. But, at the same point, you know, I, I don't think it's going to alleviate a lot of traffic either. So, you know, for the people in the neighborhood that object to it, because it's been that way, you know, I understand that, but I also seem, seems somewhat arbitrary that it's closed as well. So, so, I respect what you're saying, living on that block, and, you know, I think the schools are busy enough to, to want some more arteries to get out, you know? So, you know, for that purpose, I think, and I'm sure it is ignored, I'm sure it's ignored, by, you know, by a number of people. So, I'm on the fence. I could go either way, but I, I think that, you know, it is somewhat arbitrary, at least closed, closed off at this point, so.
I too, pretty conflicted on this. It's a tough decision, and both sides have pros and cons. Reading the paperwork preparing for this, you know, the, the theme from the town was improving emergency response times, and Chief Tillie, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but is there, to your knowledge, have you ever had an instance where, you know, that partially blocked road prevented an emergency vehicle from addressing a call, and it had to be rerouted to a longer response?
I can't recall anything right offhand. Anytime we do have a response, we want the quickest route possible, so.
Understood.
That's, that's our point. We want to get there as fast as we possibly can, if it's down Baum, or down Veterans, whatever way, we want to try to get there as fast as possible, so.
Obviously, you have some license to, to break some rules when you're going to, going to, responding to a fire, but you couldn't even fit a engine through there, is what you're saying?
No.
Okay. You, there's no way to fit an engine through there?
Well, I mean, I, I could probably get an engine through there.
Oh, you could, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You'd be in there.
You just got to go around that little line, guy right there.
Okay, let's continue.
In the everyday scheme of things, what is the closest, in the everyday scheme of things, what is the closest stoplight for exit? It would be what, Martin?
From there, yeah, yes.
If they went down there? See, and I think that was, you know, part of the reason of the decision process too, to try to funnel it down Baum. And it, I mean, you know, maybe, maybe we need to study it a little more here.
We were just looking at the increased development from when the schools were built and it was put in, but there is no time urgency at all, no, sir.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a good idea, I really don't.
Say wait on it then, and see what those developments do, and see, you know, once they're there, you know, study it again and see what that does for traffic. Just a suggestion.
And then open it up again for further comment, try to, you know, make sure that now it's on the, it's on everybody's mind, we can revisit it, and more people can come if they object to it, and they can give the reasons why.
And also, I would say too, if you're not on the sunshine list, please get on that, because this, all of this goes out in that, so it's just one way for you to be, you know, we, we, at the last meeting, we intentionally held off, so that we would give everyone thirty days, but if you're not on the sunshine list, or if you're not, so, just a plug for that, like, get on the sunshine list, because that's how you see what's happening in your neighborhoods, or what changes might be coming. So, it's just, the sunshine list is the town list, right?
It's our email.
It's our email, yeah.
So, do we want to hold off on this, or what's the...
Move to table?
I mean, I'm fine.
It's also advertised in the Coastline Times.
Go ahead and do it, I'll second it.
Deny it with revisiting, or just deny it with revisiting it.
Casey...
For voting purposes, good, so if you guys are wanting to wait, let's say it that way, the move is not to table, the move would be to deny, if you wanted to wait, based on Commissioner Ingram's idea of wait and see, right? When the development comes in, we'll, we'll recast this thing. So, if that's the route, just for y'all's knowledge, I would say a motion for denial would, would be more appropriate than tabling.
I would move to deny this.
Exactly. If we table it, it's got to be to a certain date, essentially, and we don't, there's no way.
I just made a motion.
Yeah, I'll second that, and...
Was that a motion to deny?
Yes.
Deny.
And I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of a motion to deny this update, please indicate by saying, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion for the update is denied.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next piece of business, and we're opening up our first opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any topic of their choosing. We do ask that when you are called upon, approach the podium, speak into the microphone, and identify, identify yourself by name and address. There will be no debates. Please keep your comments to three minutes if you are speaking on, as an individual, and five minutes, or if you are speaking on behalf of a group. And if you have any written remarks, please turn them into our town clerk. So, the podium is open, if anybody would like to speak at public comment.
My name is Bruce White, people know me as Woody. I live at five oh eight Lob Lally Court, Kill Devil Hills. I was here back in January, I think most of the commissioners were here, except maybe Mr. Gray, Commissioner Gray. Since then, I've had to deal with the building inspector's office again. I gave each one of you a copy of a survey, survey of my property. I had the fence put in, and I had it, it was permitted about two years ago. A year ago, I added a pool to the property inside of the fence. When the final completion was done, Marty Shaw told me that I needed to make a solid fence on the outside for safety reasons, and I complied with that. I saw the concerns of possibly a child being able to cross over. Once that was completed and inspected, I think it was Jordan that came out, Jordan Bly, I believe is his last name, he told me it was complete, satisfactory. He left, and I got a call a little bit later from, I believe Cameron, is there a Cameron that works? Okay. Camera told me I needed to get a as-built survey. When I applied for this permit, the, the fence was already there, that was already within my bounds. I have a large lot, six tenths of an acre, it's unusually large for this area. You can see that when I, the, what I highlighted in yellow, that's the square footage on the existing survey, and I added the square footage for both the shed and the pool. It brought my coverage from thirteen percent coverage to sixteen percent, which is half of what I'm allotted. The fence didn't move, the fence was well within my property. When it was inspected, Marty came out, and because I pulled a line from one corner to the next, and he, and my fence was there, he said, "You're well within your property lines, I'm not going to make you get an as-built for your fence." Evidently, they do that if somebody is in a small lot, and they want to put it right up to the edge, and I could see those concerns. I have those concerns. The pool is almost forty foot off my property line. When the health department came in, I knew that I had to be fifteen foot from the septic field. They came in with a tape measure. They didn't come in saying you have to get a survey, and they determined that I was well within their boundaries. So, that was never an issue. You could see the stamp from the health department approving my distance from the septic. I think it's an unnecessary expense. I could see if you're in a five thousand square foot lot, and you're trying to put in a small pool, trying to, trying to get your fence as big as you can, take up as much property. In my case, I don't want to, I don't want to maintain that much yard, so I only did a portion of my yard, large enough to put a pool in, in the future. They talked about it, called me back the next day when I brought this up to them, because they were the only two reasons, percentage of my property that is built on, and setbacks. Both of those were shown to them, both of them had previously been surveyed, and I just see no reason for me to have to spend another thousand dollars just to show them that that pool is in my backyard.
Woody, can you wrap?
Okay, and I'm going to stick around, I'd like to hear what you have to say, because I just think it's a lot of unnecessary expenses, and I don't see the reason, a reason why I should have to do it. Thank you.
Woody?
Thank you.
Do you have, do you have another copy?
Yes.
All right, would anybody else like to speak at our first public comment period?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and guests. Sorry, is this, thank you. My name is Debbie Swick, I live at fifty-nine Deer Path Lane, Southern Shores, and I am the creator of Ban Balloon Releases, N.C. I am thrilled to see the resolution on your agenda this evening. Again, I will ask that you do consider an ordinance in place of a resolution, as a resolution says you shouldn't do that, an ordinance says you can't do that. I have participated in trash attack, Keep It Clean Kitty Hawk, which I helped organize and create, and Southern Shores cleanup for Earth Day. I've seen a lot of garbage this month, and there were balloons in there, and I can see from the poster, you know, even the young people care about the cleanliness of the ocean. I would ask that, again, you remember that a balloon is, although it falls under the litter ordinances that do exist, it is not considered litter until it is released, and a helium or gas-filled balloon, once it is released, is un-retrievable, and that's when the damage occurs. So, please, as I, as much as I respect and appreciate you with offering the resolution, please do consider joining Duck and Southern Shores and invoking a resolution. I was contacted by the Coalition for Responsible Celebrations, which is a conglomerate of all of the major balloon manufacturers in the United States. I am working with them, as well as Balloon Mission, which is an environmental organization, and with my senator. We are working on a national campaign. While that may not impact you here, it sends, your creation of an ordinance sends such a message to the, the visitors and to the residents as well. So, I thank you so very much for putting up with me these past few months, and I appreciate all that you've done, but please do consider an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would anybody else like to speak at our first public comment period? All right, seeing no takers, we can move on to response to public comment. Mr. White, well, I guess Meredith, I'll maybe ask you, what are, can you kind of give the town side the story, just as we're here?
When, when the addition is done to a single-family dwelling, the, the owner has two options. They can submit a drawing at the time of permitting with an as-built at completion, or they can submit a sealed survey with the addition on it, showing lot coverage, setbacks, and everything, and then, that then, at completion, is confirmed on-site with tape measures, because it was, it was put on the plan by a licensed surveyor. So, it's a one or the other option. Mr. White chose to draw the pool on his site plan and do his own calculations for lot coverage. Our ordinance, one fifty-three, three fifty-five-C, requires that any addition be, let's see, sealed and signed by a person duly authorized by the state law, and a survey sealed and signed by a North Carolina licensed surveyor locating the house and all appurtenances on the lot. This would be required either at the beginning or the end. He chose the end, and that's why the as-built survey is being required. It is by ordinance.
Okay. This is a universal expectation, everyone who...
Does an addition.
Does an addition.
Fences don't require as-built surveys. Fences are put along the property line...
Well, I guess, uh, Meredith, I'll maybe ask you, what are, can you kinda give the town side the story, just as we're here?
Um, when, when the addition is done to a single-family dwelling, the, the owner has two options. They can submit a, um, drawing at the time of permitting with an as-built at completion, or they can, can submit a sealed survey with the addition on it showing lot coverage setbacks and everything. And then, that then, at, um, completion, is confirmed on site with tape measures, because it was, it was, uh, put on the plan by a licensed surveyor. So it's a, a one or the other option. Mr., um, White chose to draw the pool on his site plan and do his own calculations for lot coverage. Our ordinance, uh, one fifty-three, three fifty-five C requires that any addition be, uh, let's see, sealed and signed by a person duly authorized by the state law, and a survey sealed and signed by a North Carolina licensed surveyor locating the house and all appurtenances on the lot. This would be required either at the beginning or the end. He chose the end, and that's why the as-built survey is being required, it is by ordinance.
Okay. This is a universal expectation, everyone who.
Does an addition.
Does an addition.
Fences don't require as-built surveys, um, fences are put along the property line. You have to do a string line for a fence prior to installation, and then you have to do a string line for the fence at the completion of installation to show the property line. If you do not have your pins, you have to get a surveyor to come out and place your pins. So there is a, also a method for fences, but, um, any addition to a site requires a licensed surveyor either at the beginning or the end. And Mr. White chose the end.
Very good. Any other response to public comment? It's time. Debbie, thank you for coming out, thank you for your hard work. We'll, um, we will discuss, uh, your campaign a little bit later, and, but nice to see you. And, uh, uh, Mr. White, if you'd like to speak again, we, we have a second public comment period later in the agenda, you're welcome to address the board at that time. All right, if there's no more response to public comment, we will move on to our next item, which is, uh, introductions and presentations, our Trash Attack Community Cleanup and Poster Contest Recognitions.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening, thank you for having me, I am Sandy Markland. I have the honor and privilege of serving as the Chair for twenty twenty-four Trash Attack, which is an annual event in this town where we come out in the spring and clean up our town in advance of the season to make sure it looks as bright and beautiful as it possibly can. This year, we had a hundred volunteers and staff who collected twenty-two cubic yards of trash and five bulk tons of trash. And at this point, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Mr. Hikens, for clearing up an enormous trash problem at the base of. And you, Mr. Gray.
I'll give her say, uh, uh, we both got called by the mayor and we had to get there quick.
Right, and, and, and thank you so much for identifying that and getting people in there to clean that up, that was huge. And Ivy, thank you so much for being one of our zone captains, as you always are. We appreciate your participation, the participation of our town manager, Debbie Diaz, our deputy town manager, Charlene Allen, our town clerk, Michael Odell, members of the Kill Devil Hills Fire Department, Police Department, almost, and, I'm sorry, Derek. Public services, we could not do it without them. So we are blessed to have town officials and employees who involve themselves on their off time to keep our town great. Part of our annual event is our poster, uh, contest. And what you see before you are the three winning posters this year. The one in the center is the first place prize winner. That was done by Ella Ogborne, she is, um, in eleventh grade at First Flight High School. She could not join us this evening because she has a very busy schedule, but she did an awesome job. The other two posters, When I Call Your Name, if the poster creator could go up and stand next to your poster, that would be great. Don't be afraid, I'm gonna come up there with you. Bailey Bell, grade five at Nags Head Elementary School. And I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Cora Francie, grade three at Nags Head Elementary School. And parents, if you want to get a clear shot. Bailey, let's do you first. Commissioners, if you wanna get in the back of the shot, that would be awesome. You're, you can stand up. Now, they're gonna work behind you. We have for you. Oops, oh my gosh. Um, the certificate, but we also have for you this, which is your prize, okay? And you can open that up when you get back to your seat, but let's, let's get your picture. Go ahead and hold on to that. Can you see the, can you see the artwork? Excellent, everybody got it? Thank you so much. You can see I'm like. Bailey, I'm gonna bring this back for you to get a bag.
Slide down.
Okay, everybody down here. Your prize is in here. But this is so much better. Smile for your dad. And each one of these winning posters will be produced as a claim and put on the side of a town. So be on the lookout for your very own trash.
I'm gonna get her bag.
Forget your bag.
Very nice.
All right, congratulations to all the winners and their families of our Trash Attack Poster Contest. It's probably, I can't think of a more fun thing we get to do on this board all year than give those awards out, it's really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, town manager, any ongoing business this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, we'll move on to new business item number one. Town code amendment overnight parking at beach accesses.
Yes, sir, um, staff is requesting, um, that the board consider incorporating an amendment to s- town codes that, um, chapter seventy-two, stopping, standing and parking, parking in certain places, et cetera. This would be, um, beach access parking, which would prohibit overnight parking at the town beach accesses from midnight to three AM. What we're striving to do is a balance between, um, our stakeholders, including our residents, businesses and the general public, but at the same time, maintaining, um, access to our beaches, easy access for people, um, to use that. And we think that this would eliminate some possibly abuse of our beach accesses used for, um, overflow parking with some of our other houses on the beach.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
And our, our intent would be more of an informative notion as opposed to, um, towing and, and that, those kind of things. But we think that's a reasonable window, it allows for the early birds, get out early fishing or when you see the sunrise.
All right, um, board, what are your thoughts on this?
I don't, I don't, I don't like it personally, I think it's, I don't, I think it's twelve o'clock is, yeah, it allows twelve to three, allows for the early birds to fish, but it doesn't necessarily allow for the late night people. I know it, and also moreover, if you're saying it's just gonna be a, a no, a notice, uh, but not a ticket or not a tow, then I don't know the purpose of it, so.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, I didn't, I meant, um, possibly tickets, yes.
Okay.
But I mean, the intent isn't to go in there and tow a, a large number of vehicles. It's just that some of our residents have indicated that they, when they go out in the mornings, it's noticeable to them that these, some of these lots are being used for overflow parking on some of the other houses that are located on the beach.
Right, but in turn, I mean, my opinion, in turn, it punishes, uh, and it basically punishes everybody. If you were to put, um, maybe personally, if you were to put like a time period, like Memorial Day to Labor Day or something like that, maybe I could even, I would think that would be fair, but I still don't like it, 'cause, I mean, plenty of people are out after midnight, out here on the other banks. I don't, I don't like the restriction, and Nags Head has it, and in fact, well, anyway, Nags Head has it, and, um, I don't, you know, I just, I don't agree with it, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I get when, I get when someone's using it for overflow parking for a large house, and that's unfortunate. And obviously, if we could just target that group, that would be fine, but this has a, an impact on it, on everybody who lives here, so. I, I mean, after midnight, never got to the big beach after midnight, so, I have.
I'll play devil's advocate a little bit with you, um, I, you know, you're, you're saying it doesn't help the people who live here, but it, I, I know I've been to beach accesses in Kill Devil Hills at ten or eleven o'clock in the morning, and they're almost full. And if you've got, there are many, many accesses where at least a third of the cars at that access are parked from the house next door. And they're, you know, it's, it's obvious, you see them, you know, you know, you know that they're there.
But doesn't this have a disparate impact on the fact that you would, if you were to go to beach, the beach late at night, or you were to go to beach anytime after midnight, which a lot of people do, I, I, I think a lot of people do, actually, that this is gonna punish them for those, for those people who decide to park there overnight to save a spot for the next day or whatever. Which, you know, I get it, but.
I don't think they're saving a spot for the next day, they're parking there, they're using it as overflow parking, so that's different.
Whatever reason they're properly doing it, this has an impact on everybody else that has nothing to do with that, so this is why.
I think as many, if you could find ten people that really wanted to be there after midnight, you could find a hundred who tried to get there at ten o'clock and couldn't find a spot, but.
Comment, I think you'd find, a lot of people would not agree with that.
I don't know, I, I know a lot of people who don't even try to go to the beach in Kill Devil Hills anymore because the, because it's full.
But it's targeting people overnight parking, right?
Right.
I mean, that's, that's what it's targeting, which I.
Yeah, but if you see, if, if a cop sees, if a cop sees a car parked in, i- i- that's unoccupied, parked in, in the lot, and they're out walking on the beach, then they're gonna get ticketed.
I have a question, is it possible to do?
Comes back and, you know, they're not gonna wait around to see if the guy comes back, or if he's, you know, on, he's not gonna go onto the beach and find out if the guy's walking on the beach, or whatever it is, it's just, it's just, uh.
I wouldn't think they would, um, ticket it, you know, like if they happened to see it the first time. I don't think they would ticket it then, I think if they come back three hours later, four hours later, and it was still there.
Well, I mean, this ordinance is not gonna come with instructions on how the cop, you know, police are supposed to do their job.
True, but I mean, they, you know, they do a pretty good job.
No, I, I, I do think they'll use discretion, I, I agree, but they won't have to, so, with this ordinance.
I mean, I.
Quiet down there, Commissioner Hikens.
Yeah, I, I already thought it was illegal, actually, um, so I guess I was thinking of Nags Head, but.
Illegal to go to the beach after midnight.
To park, to park overnight there or something like that.
To, to, under this rule, you'd be parking your car, go walk on the beach, you, you could get a ticket while you're on the beach.
Could get a ticket while you're on the beach, I understand that, that's kind of, um, I mean, are we thinking of our beach accesses as potentially, as being usable for, let's say, overnight parking for a restaurant? That has late activities or something like that?
I think we're thinking that it shouldn't be overnight parking for anything.
Nah, I mean, that's what I thought they already, I didn't, I didn't think they were.
Yeah, overnight is the key word, you know? Are they staying, are the cars staying there overnight? That, no one's gonna wait around to see if they stayed there overnight.
Right, I feel like, I don't know, my thought is, if you do have a situation where an access is near, say, a restaurant that is open late, somebody goes there and leaves their automobile because they shouldn't be driving, my concern is they try to move the thing. Um, is my thought, but, um, that's just a passing comment.
You've taken it to a whole different level.
I tell you what, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, you wanna have a, our super narrow window from three to four.
Yeah, I mean.
The fishermen aren't, aren't there, pretty much everybody's asleep between three and four.
Essentially, I'm saying.
Work nights, you know, think about people that work nights, they might, or work days, they might like to go to the beach and.
Could you do one hour parking between the hours of one, of midnight and three?
I mean, I'm, I'm on the side of not doing it.
If you really wanna go to the beach at one o'clock in the morning, go for an hour, I mean, I don't.
I think it would have less of an impact if you, if you did have like an hour.
Yeah.
You know, one hour, like three to four, that way, you know, you'd have to move your car, and three o'clock's really early in the morning.
Well, I think the, all, the, the idea is to send the message to the people who are using it as overflow, like, you can't do this.
Yeah, but laws, in my estimation, are not meant to send messages, they're meant to either be enforced or not, you know?
Right, but I mean, if you, we can't post that sign unless it's a law, so that's.
Correct.
I, I've seen what you're talking about where the houses are usually parking lots. And that's not right, because people go to the beach, then they can't park.
Right, just because that house happens to be right next door to one.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right.
Correct, I've seen that, uh, because I see them come out of the house and go get their car and leave in the morning.
With suitcases, yeah.
No, nobody likes that, but it's a twelve, you know, we all live here, the ones that live here, the ones that are gonna be affected worse by this ordinance, you know what I'm saying, the ones that live here are the one that be, ones that are gonna get ticketed. You know what I'm saying, we don't want that, you know, nobody wants those people to abuse the, the public accesses by parking their cars overnight for overflow. Nobody wants that, that's clear, but to create a law that's going to, you know, basically impact all the residents here, this is what this is.
Right.
You know, I mean, if you were to have one hour, like a four hour, or, that, that, that can make sense to me, because that could be an hour where really nobody's probably up, and, you know, it's not affecting the fishermen who, who might be on the beach with their car parked there. If you wanna enforce something, but to have a law that's not enforced is even, even worse.
Right.
I, I, I'm leaning towards Commissioner Ingram's points, but Commissioner McAvoy brought something up that kinda resonated with me is, I'd like to hear what police's plans are for enacting and, and what, what are they, what do they want to accomplish with this? How do they plan to patrol our beach accesses at night and, and, we'll get a little more of their input on what this process would potentially look like if we do enact it, so, uh, that's kinda where I'm at.
Yeah, my thing is, an ordinance is not going to tell the officers how to do their jobs. So they could give you, one chief could give you this answer, a chief from six years from now might give you a different answer, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's, they'll be able to enforce it as it's, as it's spoken, you know, they may change their, um, different policy with a different chief, you know, over time, so, I mean, that's what happens, that's what happens with laws, right? It's not gonna tell the officers how to do their job, they're just gonna have, they're gonna have the ability to enforce it per the statute, or per the ordinance.
You, you mentioned Nags Head earlier, what do they do?
I'm thinking, I, I know they ticket, you know, they ticket.
Will they have no parking after a certain hour?
Yeah, 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 and they have some sort of, um, they have a very, they're very, they're very interested in their revenue source of ticketing, that's for sure. I'll say that.
Well, discussion brought some life to it.
Yeah, I mean, actually, convenience is a bigger thing than, than we're making it out to be, you know what I'm saying? Like this is, I think this would interest a lot of people in our community as to, you know, uh, basically saying, after midnight, don't, you can't use the beach access, that's, you know, that's basically what it's saying, so. Your car's gonna be parked there while you're walking. I don't understand why that's, uh, you know, just, and we're gonna do this just to punish, uh, we're gonna punish everybody just to, just to possibly get a few people that, you know, parked overnight because of, at the beach accesses, at the towners? We're gonna punish all our citizens of Kill Devil Hills? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Seeing out on the flip side of that, it's not a punishment, you're benefiting, so you're.
It's a punishment, you get a fine, when you get a fine.
But the benefit is that you might have a clear access in the morning and there might be places to park.
That benefit is not outweigh the risk.
In your opinion.
In my opinion, I have a bunch of, I have a lot of other opinions as well. I mean, unless you own a beach house, I do not, so.
Well.
I just don't think you're gonna get a resident to park overnight, and I think this targets the overnight parker.
I think so.
And stops it.
Right.
It targets anybody that goes to the beach and leaves the car after midnight for even a minute. It targets everybody that parks at the access that goes to walk on the beach after midnight.
Can we find out if it's possible to do one hour parking between the hours of, say, twelve and four? Is that a possibility?
You mean for someone to be allowed to park, I don't know how we would monitor that.
Well, then, I was getting, I was thinking, now you're getting into parking meter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Actually, the one hour idea is not a bad idea, you know, to, to say, all right, that one hour, three to four, now we can catch people, they're not gonna come out of their house to move their car in that hour, so maybe that's the, maybe that's a ticket. Three to four, very tight window, now we catch overnight parkers.
But it sends the message like, don't park here.
Parking for a three hour period only, is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm saying that if there's a car parked there between three and four, that's a pretty good chance that's an overnight parker, let's just say.
That might be when the blues are run.
Well, then you catch a fisherman, I'm not gonna like, they're not gonna like it as well, I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna like this, to be honest, that lives here.
I, I th- I think you can determine if it's an overnight parking car, you know?
Well, then you're talking about then, looking at plates and are they out of state, and that's not really allowable for the officers.
No, no, but if they, if they come by a beach access and they see a car, and then they come back five hours later and see the same car, and then
for sure.
Five more hours and they see the same car, then that car is parked overnight.
If, if, if it's seen at midnight, and then they come back at three AM and it's still there, then it's officially parked overnight. If they come at midnight and it's gone at one, it's not.
Absolutely, but that's not how the code will read, it will not say, if officer sees at, you know, twelve, then officer sees again at three, that's not how it's gonna read, and it could be enforced in any way possible, that's why you're. That's not how it's gonna read, and it could be enforced in any way possible, that's why you're very careful about how you draft ordinances, I mean, everybody knows that.
So you put if it's parked there more than five hours, you tow it? Uh, you know, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what the answer is.
You wanna keep a clock on the car.
Okay, well, uh, would the, anyone like to take action on this tonight? There's a lot of discussion, so we can, I'm, we can look for a motion, we can table for more further discussion and research.
I'll move to table it for, for, for further discussion and research and, and feedback from the people at the town.
Alright. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, table the motion, when would be like to bring this back up on the agenda?
Personally, never, but, um, in six months would be a good time.
Thirty days would be adequate, and maybe have to be the first June meeting with the way the schedule falls, but, uh.
I mean, it's not gonna be, what, this is not gonna be something that's subject to public comment, correct?
Subject to a, a public hearing?
A hearing.
Right, it's not that type of.
It's certainly up to you, I mean.
Yeah.
You can, you can set a public hearing for any, any item, um.
I would recommend that.
You were made motion table it.
Motion table it, and then, at a future mo- at a future time, uh, yeah, be, having it be to public hearing, for sure.
Um, so, when would be the date that you would have it table to, we need a date certain?
Yeah, um, I don't have the dates in front of me, but I think, uh.
Just give me a month and I will tell you the date of the meeting.
Like July or something, I just need some time.
We have a meeting June tenth, is that too close, or do you?
I think it's too close, but.
You have a, um, second meeting in June on the twenty sixth.
Yeah, maybe that would be good, that would should be good. Let's do that.
Your first meeting in July would be July eighth.
Okay, I'll move to table this to the June twenty sixth. Date for, uh, and also ask that it be, um, put on for a public hearing at that time.
Okay, so we have a.
You don't need to table it, do you?
Is your intent to set a public hearing on this, or is your intent to table it?
Public hearing.
Yes, so you wouldn't table it.
So you wanna set a public hearing for June twenty sixth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I move, I, I'm in my motion, and I move to have this put on for public hearing on the June twenty sixth.
There you go.
Alright, we have a motion, uh, do we have a second?
Who, who was this?
I'll second it, again, amended one.
We have a motion and a second to revisit this at a public hearing in our June twenty sixth meeting, uh. If you don't have any further discussion, uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? We're gonna have another public hearing. Casey won't be able to sneak off early that week, um. Wow, and it's another, I'm gonna take my opportunity, another reason to be on the sunshine list, so everybody can find out about the public hearing in advance. Alright, let's, um. The next item of new business on this agenda is appointments, uh, we have, uh, positions to fill, planning board, board of adjustments, community appearance commission, and dangerous animals appeals board. Um, I guess we will just go down the list. Uh, our first position is, um, Mike Lowax, uh, term has expired, he did not wish to be reappointed, and I think we should take a moment to thank Mike for all his service on the planning board, he was on it before I was, way back in the day. And he, he worked hard on that board, should have prepared, uh, asked a lot of questions, was real engaging, and did a really nice job.
Did a great job.
But, um, I'll open it up for discussion on nominations, is the, who would the board like to see fill that spot?
Had previously discussed, um. I hope I don't mess this name pronunciation up, but, um, Jennifer Albany's, I believe, is a very strong candidate, I believe. How does the board feel about? I've lost my notes.
Jennifer Albany's is, is a really, uh, conscientious citizen of this town, I think she'd be great personally.
Right, so we have a motion to nominate, to appoint, uh, Jennifer Albany's to the planning board, do we have a, a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, congratulations, Jennifer. Next appointment is to the board of adjustments, uh, we have an alternate and regular member, uh, position available. Um, Blake Colepepper's term as an alternate member is up, as is Ron Seidman's as a regular member. Both have expressed a desire for reappointments, um, what say you, board? What are your thoughts?
I'll second.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to reappoint Blake Colepepper as an alternate, Ron Seidman as a regular member to the board of adjustments, um, any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Alright, congratulations, uh, Blake and Ron.
Yeah, and I've watched that board of adjustments in action, and they, they do a great job, I think, uh, Mike Lowax was the, he was the, uh. Or is still, okay, he's still chair of that, and anyway, it's, uh, it's, uh, they do some really good work that we don't see.
Alright, moving on, uh, community, uh, community appearance commission, uh, Joe Williams' term has expired. She's expressed a desire to be reappointed.
Show move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Joe Williams to the community appearance commission, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Joe. He does a lot of good things. Alright, a lot of appointments, uh, dangerous animal appeals board, um. Christine Stafford's term has expired, and, uh, she has expressed, uh, willingness to serve again. Out of curiosity, when's the last time that board actually had to meet, and no, it's only case by case basis, please? Long.
Twenty twenty two, the town clerk indicates.
Twenty twenty two, okay, that's, they don't, I guess it's a good thing they don't get, called, called upon too mu- too much. So, um, Miss Stafford has expressed a desire to be reappointed, uh.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Congratulations, Miss Stafford. Alright, new business item number three, uh, letter of support for mid Currytuck Bridge. Town manager, can you?
Yes, sir, this was, this was, um, a request that the town received for the mid Currytuck, um, bridge and the North Carolina Turnpike, um, authorities' application for four hundred and twenty-four million dollar grant from the US Department of Transportation to expedite, um, expedite the construction of the project. The other thing this grant would, would do would, um, free up any monies that would come out of the DOT budget for this division, which is the division that we're in.
Oh. Alright, well, um, how's the board feel about?
I think we need support it. Yep, makes sense.
Wouldn't anybody like to make a motion of support?
Motion or con- or consensus? I'd move to direct staff to, um, offer a letter of support for the mid Currytuck Bridge.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that would be nice, a lot of money to leave available for the rest of the northeast of North Carolina. Okay, moving on, the next item on our agenda is committee reports.
None here.
Any down here? I'll just mention that I attended the April sixteenth Housing Task Force Committee, uh, Housing Task Force Committee meeting, it was nice, uh. Donna Creef was there as well, and, uh, that has become a very active group with a, a lot going on, so, um. Uh, more, more, a- as more work happens, I'll be happy to share and report it, so, um, okay, commissioner's agenda.
Um, the only thing I wanted to say is I've been, I personally have been using the dog park a lot lately, and, um, really great. Of course, everybody loves the dog park, um, in the town, it's one of the best. Um, I would like you guys to consider maybe a little more, um, light out there for when it's dusk or a little darker, you know what I'm saying, I mean, I don't know if we wanna encourage people to be there overnight. Or in the dark, but, um, but, uh, it does get rather dark there pretty quick. And that's one thing that, um, some people have, uh, said to me, you know, as a commissioner with his dog there. They said, oh, you're a commissioner, uh, what do you think about, you know, we'd like to see this, so, just something, um, to think about. I think some of the lights around the, the turtle pond pa- um, path are also not lighting up or maybe they're something to maybe look at, but they're not, um, maybe enough light could come from that, but there is a post there. Um, that could, could like lean a light possibly over, over top of, um, the dog park, um, as it gets darker. But, um, anyway, just a great spot, and I'm proud that, uh, we have such a good spot.
Anybody else, commissioner, agenda?
There, the only thing I wanted to mention is they finally got some aluminum in the air on, uh, Lake Drive.
It did, I noticed that today.
So, hopefully that'll be completed before too long. It's been a long wait.
It has been a long wait.
You, uh, town manager for your efforts in, uh, keeping, I've seen some of the letters you've sent to them, and thank you for keeping them on the roll.
Anybody else?
I just wanna thank Sandy for Trash Attack, it was a wonderful day, great effort, and we appreciate you for doing that always, um, yeah, and I see the dog park too, and even when they have the light, the Christmas lights are out there, you know, and the holiday lights are out there. It's lit really nicely just with that, so, you know, wouldn't, probably wouldn't take a whole lot.
Is pause park, pause park open twenty-four hours, does it have? No, no restrictions, okay.
We haven't had any issues with overnight dogs.
No, I was actually gonna say the same thing, the thanks Sandy, and an excellent presentation, um, thank you.
May I, may I say one more thing?
Sure.
The, um, the light at Avalon that we had discussed at, at one point, or in the, in the, I think DOT said no. But I, I, I think it's, um, it was good foresight on the people that brought that up. I do believe it, you know, I don't know if they said no because of the way it is now, or the way it's going to be. But I think it is, I think it, they were going to need a light to break traffic in that area, when once a while was in, and the car wash, and, and, uh, obviously targets, pop, so it's just changing that part of Kittle Hill so much, and it's, it's almost hard to get out and around, around, around there, so, the people of Avalon that brought that forward. It may be something that we need to look at again once these businesses are in place, and maybe DOT will look again, or have a second look, because you know, we have lights on lights, on lights, on lights down this end, but that end is now getting developed, and it's gonna be hard to get out. For people, that's all.
Alright, any more commissioner comments? Alright, hearing none, I'll move on to mayor's agenda, a few things to share. Uh, first, as been previously alluded to, a couple proclamations, the first one is a resolution opposing the release of helium balloons. The town of Kittle Hill Hills boasts a pristine coastline in a beautiful environment that has attracted visitors for decades. Our often fragile environment is negatively impacted by litter, debris, and threats to our wildlife, which include improperly disposing of helium and lighter-than-air balloons. Balloons that have traveled up to a thousand miles have washed up on our shores, clogged our waterways, and killed and maimed our wildlife. With this resolution, the town encourages the education of the public to promote the proper disposal of all balloons, and to consider possible alternatives. Whether a resident preparing for a birthday party, a local business looking to attract attention to its signage, or a regular OBX vacationer three states away releasing a balloon, Kittle Hill Hills encourages everyone to consider the environment, environmental impact of their decisions. In saying that, I will make the motion to, uh, approve the resolution opposing the release of helium balloons.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes. Alright, uh, our next is a proclamation declaring peace officers Memorial Day, uh, May fifteenth, twenty, two thousand twenty-four and Police Week, May twelfth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. This proclamation highlights the importance of our, importance of our first responders and the critical role that our law enforcement plays in maintaining our communities while also protecting the rights and interests of all our citizens and visitors, keeping the town of Kittle Hill Hills a safe place to work, visit, and live, and I will also make the motion to approve the proclamation of peace officers for World Day and Police Week in May. Further discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, very nice, so, piggybacking a little bit on Sandy's comments from earlier, I, um, would like to thank everybody for a successful trash attack. I never know picking up garbage could be so much fun, but, uh, it, it really is, and, uh, I do, you know, I never realized that mayors had a panic button until we had, um, Trash Attack this year, and, you know, Commissioner Hikens and I found a place of need that turned out to be a place of extreme need. And I, uh, called, uh, the, about everybody I could find, and, uh, Commissioner Gray and town staff came out, and we, we cleaned.
Took the weed eater to it.
He took the weed eater, and we, I can't ima- truckloads of, of mess was cleaned up, so, uh, we were actually, we were, it was nice to clean up a blight, it had probably been there for many, many years, so, uh. And we had a, a neighbor of that property come out and express gratitude in direct traffic, didn't want it too clean. But she was happy that we did what we, we could do, so, thank you all for, um, participating and, uh, helping out a mayor in distress.
Rescuing you.
Yeah, rescuing me. I had brought my two oldest children, and I had to call my wives, you gotta get these kids, they're more naked handle, this is too big of a mess, but it was, uh, it was a nice day, and.
But Oscar did great.
Oscar did good, you know, it was some good volunteer hours for him in his habit class, so.
I'd have been there for you, I was in town, for the record.
But, um, that's all I have for, oh, hold on, no, uh, one more thing for mayor's agenda. Um, early voting and second primary voting are, are about to begin, um. Just a reminder that the town hall meeting room will be serving as an early voting site and polling station for the state's second primary. Early voting will begin tomorrow, Thursday, April twenty-fifth through Friday, May eighth, with hours of eight AM to seven thirty PM, there's also Saturday session on May eleventh from eight AM to three PM. The second primary will be Tuesday, May fourteenth, with the polls open six AM to seven thirty PM. The offices involved in this are candidates for Republican Lieutenant Governor and Republican State Auditor. Sandy, you don't ever get a day off, you're always working, you gotta go to work again.
Yes, you gotta go to work.
We'll be staging this room for, after our meeting tonight, or, uh, so, okay.
Wow.
So, that concludes mayor's agenda, um, moving on, uh, town manager's agenda?
Yes, sir, and the town attorney didn't have anything this evening either.
Alright, well, let's move on to our consent agenda.
Yes, sir, um, the first item on the consent agenda this evening, the minutes from the March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Month of report, February twenty twenty-four, budget amendment number eleven to appropriate contributions received from the police and administration department. Number four is a recommendation for the twenty-three, twenty-four lease purchase agreement, um, it recommends town bank um, with a competitive interest rate and a slightly higher escrow rate. It also, this also includes, um, budget amendment number nine and number ten. Staff recommends approval of the lease financing for the purchase of these listed vehicles and equipment. The approval of budget amendment nine and ten, and to authorize staff to enter to, um, the contracts for financing. Number five is an update and adoption of the official traffic map of Kittle Hill Hills. This is, um, to convert a portion of Fourth Street from US one fifty-eight to just past David Lane to no, on-street parking, um, the official, um, parking map is posted and includes the electronically on the website, approval of the consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda will record the board's adoption of the update to the map. Number six, um, Town Code Amendment, Chapter One Fifteen Taxi Cabs, this is to update, um, the one fifteen for the, um, clarifying the requirements for fingerprinting through the Division of Criminal Information, C, DCI Network. It also allows for, um, impl- implement, implementation of a fee of forty-five dollars to cover the processing of the fingerprints, and, um, staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment as well as the amendment to the town's consolidation fee schedule. And approval of the consent agenda would be in order in a motion, consent agenda approval would be recommended in a motion in order.
So moved.
One quick, one quick question regarding item number six, that's strictly taxi cabs that are local, Uber drivers are?
No, this is taxi cabs.
This taxi, Uber's another whole thing, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye, I, I probably should have said, yeah, I have further, ha- how many new firemen have we added? Chief, how many firemen have you added?
You talking about?
You got a bunch of new firemen? Did you add about ten or fifteen?
I'll be here, sir.
Uh, no, sir, I paid.
Um, we always had.
Oh, okay, I was just looking at the numbers, twenty twenty-four year-to-date number of incidents, two hundred and forty-eight, compared to a hundred and ninety-nine of twenty twenty-three?
We have had an increase.
Twenty percent.
And you're doing it with the same amount of people?
Yes, sir.
God, we're so lucky. We are so lucky.
Uh, we need great, uh, commissioner's support.
Well, thank you very much for, for an excellent fire department, and it, and it's in a lot of the other departments too, that they have increased incidents and increased solid waste, and they're doing it without addition of people, I mean, it's, you know, the staff is just amazing, I just wanted to point that out, great job.
Okay. All right, um, moving on to our next agenda item, tonight we are gonna have a public forum. The Board of Commissioners encourages public input as it considers topics that may be directly impact, that may directly impact the town of Kill Devil Hills and its residents, property owners, businesses, and visitors. As a part of this commitment, the board established these public forum to hear about matters important to our community. Community members have been invited to attend this forum and also been given the opportunity to request specific items to be included within this agenda. Any submitted public forum, forum topics will be provided to the board for consideration and discussion. So, uh, basically, we are gonna kind of, a public forum is a chance to kind of have an open discussion with anybody here, kind of like our public comment, but without the rules of the three and five minutes, we can discuss what anyone is near and dear to your heart, so, Mr. White, uh, please approach the podium, and what was yours, sir?
Just a few more questions, I know everybody's ready to go home, I was listening to what, uh, she had written, wrote, or spoke of on the, uh, what's required, uh, first of all, I invited the planning department here, because I was hoping that they would answer some questions in front of you guys, and I don't see anybody here from the planning department that I have talked to, that I directly have worked with, uh, when I applied for the permit, I was asked to calculate this percentage, to see if it was close, and it was not, if you look in the middle of that survey where it's highlighted, it shows at the very bottom, total square footage of thirty-four sixty-five, it's thirteen point something, you can't quite make out what's thirteen, but it only went up to seventeen point eleven, so it was a very minimal improvement to the lot. So I was asked, that's why you see that on there, that is what the planning department has in their file, because they asked me to do that. So that right away, that shows that I'm nowhere close to having this as-built survey for that purpose, uh, and my second argument is that the fence was permitted, and because of where it was on my property, Marty told me personally, I'm not gonna make you get an as-built on the fence because you're well within your property lines. And I just think it's unnecessary expense, I've talked to an attorney out of Edington, he told me not to do it, we're gonna discuss it further. I told him that I would try to come here first and, you know, express my opinion, because it's not just for me, it's for everybody, every, everybody in Kill Devil Hills, um, you know, like, and if, I mean, I understand, if you look, I gave you two surveys, one was, and I just brought that, because I understand when it's a house, and I understand when it's close to your borders, but the first, uh, survey I showed you was my proposed for my house. It looks identical to the one that was my as-built, I went by the states that the survey are put, but that still cost me twelve hundred more dollars, and you will see if you, if you do a comparison in any of those numbers, any of those, it was within hundreds of an inch that anything changed from my proposed. I do understand it though, when it comes to a house, the importance of it at the end, in this case, I don't, and, and that's all I got to say, I hope you at least discuss it with them, and I'd like to see where it's in, is it a state, I like, nobody ever wrote anything out and said, I'm required to have that, now, I know that they, they could ask for it if it's something that's gonna be tight, something that's gonna be close, this doesn't even come close. So, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, I just want to say thank you so very much for the resolution, and I would be remiss, I understand that Kill Devil Hills has been nominated as one of the USA Today Best Beaches, um, congratulations on that, um, again, I'm gonna ask for the ordinance consideration, um, I'm not going anywhere, so I can come every month and see your bright shining faces, I have gone to every Town Hall, and I'm going before the Dare County Commissioners in May, um, but please, again, consider it, um, it is a necessary evil, while the resolution means you, you shouldn't do it, the ordinance says you can't, and I know Kill Devil Hills brings in an awful lot of visitors, you have the potential with the resolution to educate people, sadly, they do travel, uh, these balloons, and, and every visitor that comes here, whether you're coming from Kentucky or Ohio, their balloons that they release impact our beaches. I know, I've, I've found them from other states, and, and, um, if you're not on Facebook, on Band Balloon Releases NC, please, it's an open forum, join it, see how many balloons we're picking up, even the commercial fishermen, um, are, are participating in it, so, it is a problem. Um, I know ordinances are hard to, uh, cover, but, um, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandy?
Um, I'm Sandy Markland, I reside at two zero one three Hampton Street, I'm also the chief judge for the KDH precinct and early voting at this site. I want to reiterate that continuation of the March fourth primary, early voting begins tomorrow, runs Monday through Friday, the twenty-fifth through May tenth, from eight AM to seven thirty here, every resident of Dare County who is registered to vote may vote here. Um, there are restrictions in this election because there is only a Republican ballot for the two offices, which the mayor mentioned. That last Saturday, May eleventh, the hours are eight AM to three PM, and on Election Day, May fourteenth, the hours are six thirty to seven thirty PM. I want to thank the town, the clerk, the manager, the staff, and the board for allowing us to use this room, this is, um, over what is ordinarily asked for of you, I know it is a huge inconvenience for everyone who must deal with in this building to have no access to this room, um, so we appreciate you, and thank you so much for allowing us to be here.
We appreciate you, Sandy.
Yes, we do. All right, public forum is still open, if anybody else would like to speak?
Good evening, Randy Metzger, fifteen oh seven Dogwood Lane, and I'd like to thank the board, uh, to, they're looking over the, uh, parking uh, for the beach accesses, and I just want to say that I think that, uh, that the parking, that the, the associated houses beside the beach access, when they use it for overflow, how that impacts people that are going to the beach, residents, visitors, load up the car, you get there at nine o'clock Saturday morning, can't find a parking place, and, but I'm hoping you can find, work it out a time and a methodology to make this work, I think it would help us, uh, get our parking back. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Anybody else like to speak, yeah? All eyes just went right there, all of a sudden.
Parking's key, actually, what was I saying, ask all the fishermen what time, before you pick that hour, make sure you're right, because they'll be bent. Um, so this is a concept, I've actually talked to Ivy a little about this, so, you know, just something that's, it's been, it's been weighing on me, I don't know where to start, so I've just been sort of bringing it up to different people to try to get a sense of where it goes, because it's bigger than just this room by far. Um, hey, you know, obviously, uh, everyone's worried about housing and affordable housing, work for else, what do you call it, and and everyone's really focused on what to do with this immediate situation with thirty-five million dollars, and I understand that, like, everyone's a time crunch, but, um, it's bigger than that, and I think, I think what I'm worried about moving forward is insurance pricing people out. Um, I think the people who are lucky enough to be able to afford right now, in a few years, are gonna, are gonna find themselves in a real tough spot. And part of it, I think, is the way the system's set up, and I tried to, I went to the meeting when, uh, when Mike Causey was here, and tried to get some answers, but apparently, that's not his department, I don't know, anyway, so, but it just so happens that there was a couple of, of agents there who helped explain some things to me, so just bear with me, because I could be, it's complex, obviously, and there's, then there's moving parts, but from what I gather, uh, you know, when you insure your home, wind and hail has to be tied directly to the same number as your, as your homeowner's policy, right, so if I want to insure my house for, and you also have to insure it for like either eighty percent to a hundred percent of the value. Um, I know if the big one wipes my house out, I will not be building the same house, I'll be building half that house, and I've had that conversation with my insurance company, like, sorry, you can't do that. I also know insurance companies are complaining they have too much risk on the table, right, they're pulling out of places, because they're saying, we can't afford all this risk. Apparently, the state legislature controls this, but why not change that, so that if I want to insure less, I can, and they're covered less, right, they're not, they have less risk, because they don't want to stop writing policies, you don't think insurance could, I don't want to do that, but they don't want to get kicked out, they need to write policies to stay alive too. Um, I also know, this is another really crazy, is that you, when you do, if you have to make a claim like that, they don't cut you a check, they make you rebuild. So to get your money back, you have to rebuild maximum, so we have a big one hit, and everyone has to rebuild, exact same footprint, as much as possible in the same place it just got hit, as we're facing all these issues moving forward, that seems shortsighted. Um, anyway, this is, I'm probably getting too in the weeds here, but my question is, how do we get this conversation started so that Raleigh, or whoever this person, whatever this, whoever does come up with these things and makes these calls, starts looking at new ways to insure, so we're not seeing people, because I'm not scared about a cat five, I'm scared about my insurance bill kicking me off this beach, more than I'm worried about a major storm kicking me off this beach. Um, so I'm, I'm just brought it up, I'm bringing it up, I know the house, like I said, I know the essential housing people are way focused on what to do right now with this immediate, uh, situation with the thirty-five million dollars and everything else, but long-term, I think, before we get anything built, we're gonna have people having to move, who wouldn't have had to otherwise. Um, and, yeah, so that's, that's the thing, also, we need to really start fighting this AEC thing. Um, I don't know why that's not getting more traction and more pushback at a larger level, I don't know, it seems to me like, um, there needs to be a little bit more, I don't know, I know you guys have been great about writing letters and stuff, apparently the county hadn't, so, I don't know, but it seems like maybe some, letting Raleigh know that this is not necessarily a popular idea would be a good idea there as well, um, and, yeah.
AECs, areas of environmental.
And then the other thing is, if you are looking, you already tabled it, but maybe looking at this over the summer between what it looks like in the beach in the morning, and how many people are staying overnight, by the end of the summer, ask people what they think, they might be able to have a different take on before and after. Thanks for what y'all did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Anybody else like to speak at our public forum? Well, I was looking at my phone because Matt brought up a good point about, uh, how we all should be really worried about the stripping away the rights of areas of environmental concern, and I know the Coastal Resources Commission has a meeting in a couple days in Mania, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Seven thirty, public comment.
And that's the group that really is making those decisions, and has the influence over it, so the, the time and opportunity is now, they're in our, they're coming to visit us, and I would encourage anybody to go sit in on that meeting, it's a pretty heavy, heavy due discussion there, but it is a good time to, you know, have your voice heard. Anybody else, last call for public forum, hearing none, um, we can move on to the next item of our meeting, which is, uh, a motion to adjourn.
Quick, quick question, uh, where would we try to get some information to tell us where we need to send a letter on the insurance issue? Would that be Casey? Causey?
I'll reach out both to Willow Kelly and to Donna.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
They'll know.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that too, when I, it's seven for you, for the Housing Task Force meeting, one of the things I suggested they do is create sort of a toolbox, uh, for all the towns here to use that could be, whether it's policy changes, legislative things, um, how we did our ninety-day deed restriction, and those are things that the other towns could benefit from knowing, and that falls right into that, just, you know, one big toolbox that planning departments share of, you know, things that we can, so, be a good thing to fall in that box, if that box were happening.
I know, the insurance thing I was thinking of, if somebody's paid their mortgage off, they do have the flexibility to insure to whatever level they want, I guess it's the
It's tied together, though, you have to, it has to match your policies, if you want a home mortgage, your fire policies, I'm gonna say coverage, your wind and hail has to match that, you can't really, this coverage and this coverage.
Hmm.
Hmm.
You're sort of, they're hamstrung, what are you gonna do?
Could be a good risk.
Yeah.
I think, I think I asked Melissa Dakersman at the meeting, and she said send a letter to, uh, you know, our representatives and, and, uh, Austin Sanders, I'll give. Y'all may have a wait.
And, uh, I, I just, I just want to respond to Mr. White, um, um, because I do know, and I do know that he's, he's a conscientious, um, gentleman who, you know, is obviously, I don't claim to understand this fully, you know, but, um, I, I feel your frustration, I can see your lot is, you know, obviously, much larger than what you're using, and, um, you know, I, I don't like hearing what I'm hearing, so, I see you're frustrated, see, I know you're a reasonable person, I don't, I don't, it sounds what you're saying is reasonable as well. Um, that's, that's, that's what I want to say to that, at lea- at least, uh, I don't know what I can do, but, uh, I'm more of a yes man, especially when the issue is not impeding on someone else, you know, and, uh, you know, you're staying inside your, your box, and you are, so I don't, I don't, I just don't like hearing it, I don't, especially when you keep, when you're told something, anyway.
Anything else, anybody else? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 We're adjourned.